Ten. Five. Never already.
I call this meeting in order of the town Tallahena Board of Trustees. Second item on the agenda, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of minutes of the meeting held November 10th, 2014. I don't believe we even have those. No action. Third item is approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the meeting held February 9th, 2015.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. Any more discussion? Vote.
It's two of them.
Yes, they are.
So you have to switch.
Yeah, you have to switch.
She's getting confused down there, Donnie.
I will if we don't, if y'all don't switch places.
She doesn't know us.
I'm sorry, because I wrote it all this way.
Just go along with the tide. Go with the tide, Donnie.
Didn't know I'd be told where I had to sit.
Yes.
I was told everybody moves down and then you can go from the end.
I didn't know that was, I didn't know that was an ordinance. I'm sorry.
I did neighbor.
There we go. When I first walked in here, you made me get up and move again. Okay. I am abstaining, I wasn't here, I don't.
Okay. Donnie.
Yes.
Donnie, abstaining.
Ronda.
Yes.
Yes. Fourth item on the agenda, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the meeting held March 9th, 2015.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. I second that motion. Any more discussion? Vote.
Abstaining.
Yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item number six, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the meeting held March 13th, 2015.
Make a motion to approve.
I second that motion. Any more discussion?
Renee.
Abstaining.
Donnie.
Yes.
Donnie, abstaining.
Yes.
Yes. Item number six, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the meeting held March 30th, 2015.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any more discussion? Vote.
Renee.
Abstaining.
Donnie.
Yes.
Donnie, abstaining.
Yes.
Yes. Item number seven, approve or reject general fund purchase orders?
Who, what's the order for detention? Who'd we take to detention center?
What came here?
I said, who'd we take to the detention center for purchase order number 040023?
Corey Heinz. It's on the invoice that they sent.
Okay. Was that one of our warrants or one of the county warrants?
I could not stand him and make the arrest.
Um, there was a, well, I can't say about that, but he was involved in an assault case locally and was jailed for that.
Did we arrest him or did the county arrest him?
I don't know the answer.
Jack?
Jack, did we arrest him? Jack, did we arrest those people?
Jack, you arrested Corey Heinz.
Oh.
On that assault case, was that our arrest or the county's?
It was ours, it wasn't on the warrant.
Was it on the warrant?
On the warrant.
Okay.
There's a warrant from the county.
No, he said it was on X.
So it was our warrant? Okay. Uh, on the staples, on the batteries, on 030048?
Yes.
What was the quantity of those batteries? How many?
I would have to look on the invoice. It's on the invoice that you have.
I should bend that one, this is kind of quick.
I looked at it, I didn't see a quantity. That's the reason I was asking.
If you look on the pic sheet or something, it'll, it'll be on there. It'll list how many are in the pack.
Okay, thirty, on this sheet it was.
Yeah.
It wasn't on the invoice.
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty-six is what it was. Not remain.
Make a motion to approve. I second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Vote.
Renee.
Yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Donnie. Yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Yes. Item number eight, public forum. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make statement that Donna Hannenberg's been serving since October. Should've been able to step, should've been, pulled a step down at that time. So can you definitely get that up?
Um, I have had a lot of flack over this and I called OML after the, the next morning after the March meeting. Uh, yes, I had to step down and, which I did. The lady at the, at OML told me that this is not the first time it's happened, that cities all across the state have had this happen and that they have turned around and reseated the person. She says it's totally legal. I told Jackie and I told Rhonda and I said, but you call and make sure that I'm telling you the right thing. Rhonda called up there and the same thing was told to her and that's what happened. So I'm very legal.
I want to know if this happened as the precedent was established at six months after we were supposed to step down.
She knew exactly what had happened and she told me it was legal to have that done.
Well, I thought you said that they, they provided guidelines and not legal decisions there. That's not a legal decision.
I didn't say anything.
That's that, that's staff.
I'm just telling you what she told me.
And after that, as we talked about before, Lom, I mentioned the last meeting, then I contacted our lawyer and our lawyer advised us how we could do it.
Well, I think it's so doing what you've done is you deprived the citizenry of this town of their right to elect their officials because you should've then had it, had it reelected in a special election instead of appoint, reappointing her six months after the fact. There's something really just not coked in about it.
I'm just telling you what they said.
Well, I'm telling you what I read and, uh, I spoke to an attorney about it too and it, it feel, it seems as though, uh, that, uh, the public is entitled to know that a position has been vacated and neither elected and or appointed. This did not happen and as such, the public was then denied their right to elect their representative.
Of course.
So I maintain that it is being an issue and I think you need to have some more discussion about it.
Sean, are we not correct in following your advice?
You are correct.
Thank you.
As Donna said, it's factor.
And you think it would stand the test of a declaratory judgment presented to a district judge?
That is a question that the judge will have to answer.
So there is some variable, huh?
No, there's not any variable. You're asking me what a judge is going to do and I never know what a judge is going to do.
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking you if you're very convinced that your opinion is correct and infallible because I, I think that it's not.
Well, first off, I've never said that my opinion is infallible.
Well, you're, you're kind of picking at words now.
No, I'm not picking at words. I'm, I'm trying to respond to the question. Basically what you want to ask me is would I feel comfortable taking this in front of a judge and arguing our position?
Yes.
I would feel comfortable taking it in front of a judge and arguing our position.
Wow.
The only question I have, Sean, is, is were the votes taken in that six-month interim? Were those legal votes?
She voted on the budget?
Can you step out here so we can see you?
Sure. Yes, they're legal votes. Um, the only question.
Even though the law says she has to step down at the next meeting?
That's what the law says. Let me, let me ask, let me ask the question first. As I recall, the only no vote on any of those during that timeframe would have been your votes on, on certain things and that still would not have changed the majority vote.
That's, that's not what my question was. My question was, was her votes legal, period?
I believe her votes were legal, yes.
The lady at OML told me they were.
Yep.
Even though the law said, by law, she wasn't able to say it after the first year anniversary?
I'm, I'm telling you, the answer to your question is, yes, I think the votes were legal.
Okay.
I don't see how that's possible. You're supposed to step down in your time and our, not only did she not step down, she continued to vote on things in an interim of six months, period, when she wasn't even legally on, on the council.
Unfortunately.
Just because, just because nobody did their job and asked her to step down doesn't make it legal at all for her to continue on the board. Especially for six months and then continue to vote as a member of the board. She wasn't even supposed to be there in that six months. She wasn't supposed to be there after a year. No, first of all, nobody asked her to step down, that's a violation. Second of all, she's continued to serve another six months and voted on everything, including the budget for 2015. And then there was no election, people just circumvented our right to represent, to vote for our representatives. That was, we were completely deprived, deprived of our right to vote. And then you're, you're telling me that, yes, you feel comfortable with it?
Yeah, I do. And what I'm saying, and what I'm going to say now is if you disagree, you have the right to go take it to the court and hire an attorney and.
You know what I wish we had, right choice, an attorney who would represent the constituency of this town and not three members of the board.
I, I don't represent just three members of the board.
Yes, you do.
Oh, I didn't know.
You, you, you never involved Donnie in any of it in your discussions. You didn't involve him in this.
This is not.
You consulted with the attorney.
Yeah, this, we, we have, we have gone past what, what the public forum is, its purpose is, um, and so let's, let's go on. If there's anybody else that has anything else in public forum, who is that?
Well, in other words, you know, we'll talk to you no more.
See, does anybody else have anything else in public forum?
Because obviously it's not legal.
Okay. Item number nine, financial report. There isn't one. Mary, we'll get those emailed to us.
Well, I've, I've got one and I need to ask questions about it.
Any worries?
That's February's. I'm, I'm having concerns. I know some of y'all think everything's great and we're fine, but when I look at the February financial report, it shows that we're behind in our budget, $67,000. To be exact, $67,433.50. We expected in our budget to have collected $491,848.90, but we actually only collected $487,792.74, which meant we collected $4,056.16 less than what we projected on collecting in fees. Now, when you go back to total expenditures, on our budget, we budgeted $455,719.44, but we actually spent $519,096.78. Means we overspent $63,377.34 from June of, uh, Jan, uh, July of the first, 2014 to February the 28th. So we're basically spending $10,000 more a month than we're bringing in. We're behind in our budget. Now, I know that everybody's saying we're paying our bills and I would probably say, yes, you're probably right, but how are we paying our bills? Mary, can you tell me the discrepancy, please, on how we're able to pay $67,000 more dollars when it's not in the budget? Where's that money coming from? Can you come out here, please, and address the, the board?
I think she should sit out here all the time because she's representing.
No.
Go ahead. Um, among other places, we have a USDA grant refund. I mean, it's more complex than to tell you a single line item, but basically if you're asking how we cash flow the deficit, and I'm going to talk about the town and public works in general coming in together, um, if you go back to the prior fiscal year, we had a windfall in sales tax one month. That money was put back, okay? So then that money is sitting there moving into the current fiscal year and in addition to that, uh, we got the USDA refund and between those two things.
So you're saying that the USDA refund, in my understanding, went to pay the IRS and it's not even a line item in the budget?
Yeah, it is.
Where, where's the IRS in here on the, on the expenditures?
Oh, okay.
Or in the budget, the IRS?
Okay. The public works budget, I thought you were talking about.
No, I'm talking about the town of Tallahena.
Okay, and let me tell you, on those prior period payroll taxes, you're right, they are not budget in the line item because the problem I had with that was this. You know, legally, I've been told time and time again, we can't pay prior period taxes with current period revenues. So it put me in a dilemma as far as how to represent that information. I had reached out to the state auditor as well as the OML for some guidance because we had an unusual situation. I, I doubt we're the first folks in it, but that doesn't matter. You know, what mattered to me was how do I put this on a budget proposal? I don't know how to do this when, when I'm being told by the attorney and the IRS and all these other places, like you have to do this, but the state law doesn't allow for it. And unfortunately, when I posed those questions to both the state auditor and the OML, what they came back with was the statute, which is you can't do it. And so that's what I did. I didn't do it. And so basically at that point, what I was shooting for in the budget that was approved was to try to generate enough what appeared as a profit that was going to cover those prior period payroll taxes. So in other words, the current year's cash generated was going to cover those prior period payroll taxes. And so far, that's what we've cashed for.
Okay, so my understanding though is, is the money we got refunded on the grant actually went to pay off the IRS.
Yeah, among other money too, sure.
So it took more than what we got refunded from the IR, from the grant to pay the IRS on. So that's a wash plus more money out of our cash flow.
Right.
Okay? So what I'm looking at is, what I'm seeing in my mind is that we're actually using our carryover money to pay our bills.
We're using your carryover money to pay the IRS.
I thought we used the grant money and some carryover money to pay the IRS and now this $67,000 doesn't include the IRS. Where did it come from?
Now, the $67,000 does include the IRS.
Well, it's not a budget item in here.
Okay, I don't know which number you're looking at.
This one right here.
Okay, fiscal, yeah, a variance number, that does include the IRS because look.
But it wasn't a line item up there.
I understand that, but I want you to look at something. Here it is. And although there's nothing in the budget, it shows that we went $64,000 over budget in prior period payroll taxes. So in your variance column, yes, that is included, which interestingly enough, if you added that back, then we're pretty much balanced on the budget.
So, so you're saying then that none of this is the current taxes, is all the IRS and back taxes and?
That's why it says prior period payroll taxes.
Okay. Okay. So what you're saying is?
We're actually only about $2,000 over budget.
If you didn't want to consider the prior period payroll taxes.
If you didn't consider.
But, but the money from the grant was in the budget, but the bill itself wasn't in the budget. So you're telling me about, if you're telling me, what you're telling me here is that we should have approximately $60,000 in the bank.
You know, Donnie.
That should be part of the 10% that we're not touching until the.
You're just throwing a lot of numbers at me.
These are a lot of numbers that are thrown at me.
I understand, Donnie, but let's sit down where I can look at my numbers instead of just being assaulted with numbers and sit down instead of you just calling out random numbers.
Okay, then let me ask you this. Do you know what our current balance is in our account approximately?
Oh, sure, I could pull it up right now.
Okay.
Is that what you want me to do?
Yeah, yeah, so that way I know how much of the carryover money we have.
Mr. Gregson, is this considered a financial report? Sean, is this considered a financial report?
Let's go ahead and answer his question. If he wants to know what we have.
Okay, it's going to take me just a moment because although I can't pull up the current cash, I do have some future transactions posted in the year that I need to adjust for. So if you'll excuse me just a moment, I'll give you the number you're asking for.
If that's the only thing you have on the page.
Yeah, we can move on if she can come back and, and tell us.
Okay, I ask a question. Um, since you guys were talking about taxes, I, I was wondering, and a lot of other people were, what years were those taxes from?
You're talking about the IRS, isn't it?
We had IRS payroll taxes.
13.
14.
It was from 2013, 2014?
No.
And there was, yeah, 2011, there's more than 2011, 12. It was 11 and 12?
11 and 12 and 13 and 14?
Uh, it wasn't 14.
14, she's paid. 14, she's paid.
Yeah, I don't, I can't, I can't definitively say on all of the actual years, uh, but it wasn't last year. It was, it was at least 13 and 12, but I don't, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, so I can't say since then. But I don't, I won't pick last year.
I have one more question in regards to that. Was payroll tax taken out of, out of our employees' taxes and not paid? Where did that money go?
Pay other bills.
Where?
I think to pay other bills was my understanding. I wasn't on the council at that time. That's what I've been told since.
So we don't really know?
Okay. I don't know. Pay other bills.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 10, election of mayor. I believe you will give your nominations and then we will, we will vote on them. Do we vote individually after each?
No, take, take, take all the nominations and then vote. It's just like a regular election, though, I guess it's five people voting.
I nominate Gina Gregson. I'll second that.
I nominate Donnie Faulkner. I'll make it a second.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Can you hear back there? Speak up a little bit.
Is that all the nominations?
For mayor?
For mayor.
Who were they?
Gina Gregson and Donnie Faulkner.
Donnie is mayor?
None yet.
Wow. Really don't.
Um, one at a time or just?
Take the votes.
Okay. Renee.
So you need to say which one we're voting for.
Yes, yes. Instead, instead of saying yes or no to the vote, say.
So just kind of, we're going to state who we want to vote for?
Correct.
Donnie.
Yeah. I'll vote for myself.
Donnie.
Gina. Gina Gregson.
Okay, Gina Gregson.
The mayor?
Yes.
What was the vote, Gina?
It was two, did you vote? Yes, it was two, three.
And, and before we go on to the 11, just to let the public know, the balance in our general account is 31,219.
Is that where we should be at 99%?
Or 10% of carryovers, probably a little low, so we're using some of our carryover money.
Item number 11, election of vice mayor.
I'll nominate Renee Monster. Bailey.
I nominate Donna Hannenberg.
I nominate Rhonda. I don't want it.
Okay. So what do I do on that if she?
Take a vote.
Ready?
I nominate Rhonda.
So it's Renee.
Can I speak up, please?
The nominations are Renee Bailey for vice mayor and, and Rhonda Sears. Sorry about that.
Vote.
Renee.
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 You vote yourself?
Sure.
And Donnie, Renee.
Mm-hmm.
Donna, Rhonda.
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 Myself.
Gina.
And Rhonda.
Okay, Rhonda Sears is the vice mayor. Okay. Item number 12, discussion in action regarding the transfer of property to the VFW of Tallahena and EMS of Tallahena.
This, we have heard that the deed never got filed. At the time that the board gave the 25-foot property to EMS and the VFW, it was stated that VFW was not going to sell the property and we have believed, are within our legal rights to give that to a nonprofit organization to be used for the benefit of the town. What has happened is this building has since been sold to a private individuals. And as my understanding, under Article 10, Section 14, the taxes shall be levied and collected for public purpose only. Basically, this prohibits the gift or donation of public funds directly by payment of money or providing free rent, utilities, or other services, indirectly by lending public equipment or public employees when the primary benefit goes to a private corporation. Now, what I've asked Sean to look at is that, does that mean that we cannot give this property to a business? To me, that's how I interpret it, but.
Yeah, you can and, but more to the point, because the deed was never filed, never done, the transaction never occurred. So if the intention of the board is you want to rescind the, the transfer to the, to the VFW, and it's on here for EMS too, I don't know what, what the discussion would be on that property, but if you want to rescind it, you're within your rights to do that. The concern that you need to have in doing that is because there has been that private sale, there is the possibility that whoever purchased that property could file a quiet title action and include the town as a party in that action. We have very good defenses. Number one, the deed was never filed. Number two, Rhonda just talked about, about giving it to a private entity. Number three, um, because we put a caveat whenever we transferred the property, verbally put a caveat, it's not in our minutes, we went back and looked at it. That caveat of don't sell property did not in our minutes, but everyone recalls that. Those are three pretty strong arguments we could make in a quiet title action. Problem is that if we have to make those arguments in a quiet title action. So if your desire is to rescind the transfer that you did about, about a year ago, I think, um.
Not long ago.
That's about six months.
Six months ago, no, yeah.
But it, but if we leave it up like it is, it wouldn't be transferring to a private individual, still be transferring to the VFW, would it not?
Well, yeah.
I mean, is, is Larry, is VFW technically still in existence, Tallahena VFW?
Yes.
But you came, what, two months ago and told us you weren't.
They said they sold the building.
Well, if you listen to me when I said, first of all, what I said was, I didn't think the VFW was going to sell it. He sold the building. Then I told you that one of our members sold the building and then told us he sold it.
Okay, but did you not stay?
We, we merged with, uh, Wilberton, so the VFW Tallahena Post 2300 is still in existence. We just merged with Wilberton.
Is it still 2300?
Yes.
Well, would the sale be?
It would have.
I remember that you stating that, that the Tallahena VFW is not in existence, that it had shut down.
Not in existence yet.
How can they sell a property?
We are meeting still at the.
Well, they haven't transferred.
Chalk talk.
They do have a transfer.
No, I haven't done that yet. We, we let them have it and didn't, didn't follow up.
The VFW will be meeting until June.
Yeah, no.
Then we will merge with.
They sold the property next door.[1703.12]
Post and Wilberton.
So has the property sold?
It has been a bid offered on it, but as far as I know, it's hadn't closed yet. So the VFW is still owned by the VFW.
There are several ways of looking at this, and one way I'm looking at it, is it worth a lawsuit over twenty-five feet of property that the city will never use? Because if we have to go to district court, it's gonna cost us a minimum of five thousand dollars to defend what we think we have the legal right to defend. Second of all, it does help the VFW if we do transfer it. Third of all, it's another business coming to town, it's gonna pay sales tax. You know, of course, we're not giving it to a business.
Right, what we would do at this point is we would put together a quick claim deed and deed it, de- that's the VFW. Property to the VFW.
And what they do with their business, right. And what they do.
We know that it's eventually gonna go to a private entity, but what we're doing is giving it to the charities.
Was it sold by a person or was it sold by the VFW?
If the VFW disposes of it, that's their business, once we deed it to them.
Did it have not so?
I mean, what they do is their business. But we're deciding, what we're deciding here, do we want to say no to the VFW and possibly end up in a court action that's gonna cost us five thousand dollars over twenty feet of property that we'll never use? Well, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and transfer the property to VFW and EMS and get this over with.
Be a quick claim deed?
Yes.
Be sure that is how it is in the minutes. You want me to do the quick claim deed or you want it to be done out of this office?
Yeah, we can do it, quick claim's easy.
Okay.
I mean, their standard form, just fill in the blank.
I second.
We just need to make sure it gets done.
Yes. Now, the only question I have, do we have an actual legal on that?
I do not want to answer that question.
Gina, when you went over to the courthouse, did you research that one?
No, I was not.
So, but we have to, I think, Larry, I think that's one of the problems that held us up a little bit, because I'm not sure if we had an actual legal. You know, that we have to have a legal before we can actually transfer it. And so we may have to, we may have to actually ask for a survey to transfer it.
And there is a VFW file with a legal description in it.
It has a legal in that file?
Isn't this the one where Spaz was?
No, no, I'm not talking about the property she went and pulled, I'm talking about a VFW file that was in the clerk's office when we were trying to find deeds and everything else, and it included legal descriptions in there.
Of the street?
I honestly don't know, I just know that there were legal descriptions in there.
So maybe we get this going.
Describe everything.
Yeah, the motion and a second, any more discussion? Can you read the motion back, Gina? Donnie Faulkner made a motion to file a quick claim deed.
Transferring the road easement, I believe that's, is that Lawrence Street?
Yes.
Transferring Lawrence, the unabated portion of Lawrence Street, twenty-five feet to VFW and twenty-five feet to EMS, has a quick claim deed.
VFW and twenty-five to EMS. Okay. Vow. Renee? Donnie?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
No.
Gina? Yes. Item number thirteen, discussion in action regarding rent due from Spaz.
Ms. Gregson, is there too much for me to take on that? Okay, is Missy here? Missy was gonna be here, I don't see her, so.
Yeah, in the police station, there's some more out there.
Do y'all know if Missy is back there or anybody?
Is there a Missy here?
Thank you, Terry. Okay, well, if Missy's here, it's probably a non-issue, then I don't know that I would want to ask on her behalf, but I mean, I certainly wouldn't actually, but I can tell the council what's going on, which is she originally had a lease agreement with the city, it actually predated my coming here, but I made some extra copies for you guys to look at. She was able to occupy the building for commercial purposes for a period that was rent-free, and some of the other council members might be able to give you a little more background on that than I can, because like I said, that predates me. Anyway, what can I just do with all my papers that I have on top of that? Let's see. So, thank you, no, I just pulled those off the top of that. Okay, well, it'll turn up then. So basically then, the situation is that she has an outstanding balance due on her rent, and that outstanding balance, not counting anything accrued for April, which she did occupy for part of the month, and I'm not actually sure if she's out, but the outstanding balance as of the end of March would be twelve hundred dollars on her rent due. And what she had approached myself and Jackie about was, I guess, maybe improvements in equipment and such that she had that she wanted to take out for partial trade. What I advised her at that time was, of course, this would have to come before the council, but she didn't ask for this in advance. You know, we didn't agree to this on the front end, this is coming in after the fact to settle the debt, and of course, there are strict state regulations on municipalities in that regard. To prepare for this conversation, however, I did ask one of the maintenance guys, I believe Kenny Gregson, did a walkthrough. I don't even know how much detail you guys want to get into if Missy's not here, because like I said, I'm not asking this on her behalf, I just wanted to be ready for you guys.
So you're saying the first year she didn't pay anything?
I wasn't here with that, you'll just have to refer to that agreement, maybe one of the other council members could tell you.
She was leased the building and part of, but I only thought it was for like six months.
Six months is what it says in the contract.
Rent-free, so she could improve the building, and they did, improve it immensely. The restroom was, had to be replaced, everything, it was, and what she wants to leave, I believe.
The city bought all the materials.
The city bought all the material?
Like I said, that's before my time.
I didn't realize that.
Well, it says the landlord agrees to provide a new hot water heater and interior windows for the building, and buy supplies for the repair of the walls, that's what it says.
And there was a huge field that holds lumber.
Anyway, what she wants to do is she wanted, do you want to continue?
Sure, so when Kenny did the walkthrough, he brought me a list. Some of these things were actually installed, for example, a toilet and sink, I guess the existing toilet and sink would not meet health department regulations, where we've established it. So she did an additional toilet and sink. There were three air conditioners, let's see, one was new but had no controller, the other two were about five years old. There was some insulation that had been installed, as well as another roll that was probably worth forty or forty-five bucks, and then some hanging lights and some styrofoam board, maybe four ten-dollar sheets.
Right, and she had the, I lost my grandpa. She was, the lights are the ones that hung over the tables, and those were, there were six of those lights.
Right, hanging from chains.
Hanging from chains. And the air conditioners, were they in good shape?
Kenny could, basically, where's Kenny?
One was a good set, the controller didn't work, I called it, got away.
Yeah, it was a year old and brand-new, but without the controller. And then the other two worked as well, they were just, had a few more years on them. But Kenny said probably for the new one, what, it'd be worth about seven hundred fifty bucks, if it had the controller, which it didn't.
Right.
You know, less than seven fifty then.
Okay, Marion, it says down here, the tenant should pay all utility charges for electricity, water, gas, sanitation, blah, blah, blah. Did she?
Yes, she did, her water's good. We're actually in the process of filing that account now, but it is current.
Okay. But there's still a balance due on it?
I'd have to look it up specifically when we file, we're applying back a meter deposit, I mean, I'm gonna say it's current in that it's not past due, but yes, I'm sure there's a balance, just not a past due balance.
When did she close?
Gosh, back in February, maybe?
I think so.
February? This was good for one year, so did she sign another contract from May to?
Not to my knowledge, I never saw another lease come through.
So after May, there was no, we had no legal?
Not to my knowledge, I don't remember it ever being discussed again, no.
She still has access to the building, and she's been still to take things out, has anybody actually checked to see what's remaining in the building?
Yeah, actually Kenny Gregson did a walkthrough with her. To take questions.
And they have, I know the, on the ceiling, she had most of that done, and then she had a few, the four sheet fling exits.
Right, right, the additional sheets of styrofoam board, they're probably only worth about forty bucks altogether though, at least that's what Kenny told me. Anyway, that's the information I have, you guys, I just wanted to be prepared for Missy to come. Like I said, I'm certainly not asking on her behalf, I'm just providing the information.
Thank you.
What was the? Okay, so did she not pay for six months or a year?
Six months.
Six months.
Six months, and do you think that stuff that she did to the building was worth like five hundred dollars a month? That's probably what you would charge somebody for renting a building like that. That's awfully great deal.
Sean, help me out here, since she didn't actually sign another lease, month to month.
On the term of the last month.
Mm-hmm, right. So there's still a binding lease?
Yes.
And even though she didn't come in and sign another one?
Correct.
So she basically owes us twelve hundred dollars?
She does, and I told Rhonda, I think, you can pursue it in small claims, you're probably gonna get a judgment, this is probably something that you can send, send Mary over, she's gonna love that, but you probably send her over and probably present the matter to the small claims judge, and I would think more than likely you're gonna get a judgment, the problem then becomes collecting on the judgment.
May I add to that then, because I have had frequent written correspondence and record of basically, you know, trying to get this debt resolved, and it is of my opinion, Missy has not showed any reluctance to pay, she was trying to get a better deal. I told her that wasn't gonna work without the council, I don't think it'll be necessary to seek a judgment, I feel really confident that she will pay what she owes.
So does the council want to do anything about the stuff she's leaving, any?
Anything she leaves in the building becomes our property.
That's what happens with all my rentals, wherever they leave, become surplus, they have a certain amount of time to get it out, and then it comes on.
Since that time passed for her to get it out? Can she go get anything out now?
She's still there, and that's actually why, Renee, I wanted to ask some guidance, because the way that I wrote this item on the agenda is discussion in action regarding rent due from Spaz. She was still moving things out, selling them off from location, and so the balance that I gave you is as of the end of March, I hadn't done any pro reading for April. So I would also seek the council's guidance in regard to that matter.
Well, to me, if she's not already out, she's gonna owe us for another month of April, since it's already April 12th. And usually rent is due by April 10th.
Right, okay.
So I would address sending her a letter saying that she needs to pay for April's rent, and that needs to be vacating the building by the end of April and turning the keys.
Very good, I'll get that correspondence taken care of, thank you.
I make a motion that we advise, Missy, I'm not sure her last name, is it Delve?
It's not, but.
It's not, I hesitated, it was. Said that she will need to pay for April's rent and vacate the building by the end of April and turn in her.
Do you want to rephrase that for all back rent?
And for all back rent, need to pay for all back rent.
To pay back the rent as well as April's rent.
Yes, so be in addition.
Lucy said she didn't go and carry other stuff out.
Okay, I have a motion.
Motion?
Just a second, any more discussion?
Can I just ask a question about that?
We're voting right now, go ahead.
All right.
Yes.
Donna, I'm sorry, Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item number fifteen, discussion in action regarding the Faulkner Building. Yep, that's what I've been told. Discussion in action regarding future plans for the city property located at 400 Veterans Street.
Same property we're discussing, at one point I had an individual come and ask me if we would consider selling that property to them, and I was advised that when that property was given to us, that there was a stipulation that it could not be sold, that it was for our use or however we saw fit. So I asked Gina to go, Gina Jones, to go and pull the deed, and I do not find that in the deed, and I'm sorry, I didn't make copies for everybody, but it's here if you'd like to see that. And then as I was checking the state statutes, I see that if we decide to sell that property, it looks like we have to go out, put it up for a vote of the people. So I don't know if we want to go and seek other renters to this, if we want to hold on to it for our city use. What do we want to do with this property?
I know there has been some interest in buying it, there's been some interest in using it rent-free as an animal shelter.
Well, I suggest until we have our tenant out, that we table this until we know where we're standing at that point. Once we know where we're at at that point, then we can address it and look at options.
And in the meantime, be thinking of options.
Yes, be thinking about the options on that, but there hasn't been somebody that's asked us if we're willing to sell it. But am I right, are we that happy, right, that it has to go for a vote of the public?
Has he reviewed that?
It's the American Legion on veterans and highways, the building where Spaz was.
No.
So we did no action. High Boys used to be the head start.
Item number fifteen, discussion in action regarding the Faulkner Building at 308 Dallas Street, blocks sixty, blocks four, five, and six.
I think I've got it safe enough to pull down, I asked Dale to take a look at it to give me, if there's anything he saw that needed to be done before we actually removed the barricades, because initially those barricades was put up because it was deemed unsafe, and before we take them down, we need to deem it safe. And I asked Dale, I think I've got things pretty much, he may say something different here, I may need to do some more, I'm not sure, but that's why I asked him to come down, and he said he could do it today, I called him last week, I think, when I called him. And so he came by, took a quick look, and to see if there's one other thing that I might need to do before we can actually start taking barricades down.
The only thing that I saw, we just need to make sure we keep a close eye on the support columns that we put in there.
Ensuring.
Anything that breaks in there, it looks like it's adequate right now, okay. The only other thing that I would recommend we do, I don't think you have to do it, but I would recommend, the walkways going into the buildings, there's a couple of plate glasses, that don't have any plywood over them, I would go ahead and put some.
Put some over it till we get it, back to the storage.
So, and the barricades, do we need to leave those in supply?
I think you can take them down as far as my.
Okay, so what I will do is tomorrow I'll call the OSHA lady and let her know that we deem it, we think it's safe, and to get her approval to go ahead and take the barricades down.
Yes, when I spoke with OSHA, she said we need a written agreement or a written statement from you on fire, to show that.
I can give them one, I'll give you this.
Okay, so what we need to do now on that particular building is, because I believe we condemned it, correct?
No, you haven't condemned it, you have re-condemned it.
Okay, all right. Then all we need to do then is deem it safe, and we'll be good. That's what the motion needs to be, is to deem, describe building as safe.
Now, should that, there are two different items on here, I put it on two different ways.
Handle the first one, to deem it safe, and then handle the second one when you get to it.
What about the clearing of all the other debris, like under a lock cleanup? It's gonna take him, there's still quite a bit of debris in the back.
Okay, I don't see anything about debris on the agenda.
No.
Just discussion actually regarding the Faulkner Building?
Yes.
So.
Okay, well, you want to discuss the debris under the building?
To me, it's still an unsightly building that we are working on trying to get cleared up, and then the barricades is a separate issue in my mind.
But if it's the flagboard up, you can't see it, you should drive back through the alley.
Right. Now, if you want me to put a tarp back up where people can't see it, I can in the back until I get it done, what you're asking?
Well, for the past two months, Donnie, you've come and said you need a few more days, a few more days.
Well, let me ask you this, just to be fair about this, right next to Spaz, there's a house that's been torn, been tore down for how long, and you've never said a thing about it? There's a burnout house over here on Veterans Street that's been there three years, the city council never said a word about that. At least I'm working on my property, trying to get it taken care of. If somebody hadn't called OSHA, I'd have had it tore down because I had help hired, but somebody called OSHA, so it meant that I either had to pay fifty thousand dollars to tear it down or do it myself. And I don't think any of y'all would pay fifty thousand dollars to tear it down when the law didn't say you had to. The law says I could go ahead and tear it down by myself, and I've done that. And I've been doing it at a point where it's least effective to other people to keep it from bothering other people. I try to do a Pam side on Sundays when she's closed, I try to do it at the nighttime at first, where it didn't affect anybody on the street. I've tried hard to do it where it has bothered fewest people. Now, I'm taking care of it, since I can't hire anybody, I have to do it systematically, little, little, little. If you can drive back, or you see that there's lumber's being stacked up, you see that the brick are all down on Pam side completely, and I've got one little section to do on the south side, and I'll have it done barring the rains this week, that other section down.
Probably won't get to work on it all.
And that's what I'm saying, probably won't get to this week. But I am systematically working on it to take care of it, and try to preserve some of that building so we don't end up looking like heartsorn. That was the whole goal, is so we don't have just a bunch of balled-out buildings and empty spaces in our town. So I'm trying hard to get it taken care of, I'm working all the time, most time you'll see me back there, there's times I've gotta do other things. And I'm trying to do it for the good of the town, so that's all I can say, is I'm working on it.
And I didn't hear any comment about what is the status of these other buildings that haven't been met with the same kind of opposition?
They're not on the agenda right now.
Week after week, or month after month, have been played. What did she say?
I said they're not on the agenda.
I can still ask a question. Yes, I can.
So, the question about the debris is, if you feel that the debris creates a safety concern, that's where it would come in play almost on the agenda. Because really, what we're discussing here is whether we're gonna deem the building safe. safe or unsafe. So, that's what you need to ask.
And just for clarification, there is a safety fence that blocks off any access to the debris.
Yeah.
And keep out signs.
But there is a fence there.
And when I talked to OSHA, that's what she told me to do.
Got an engineer saying it's safe, and I drove by there and it was safe for me. So, I'm just clarifying for Rondell and how to vote, or however she wants to vote.
Okay. So, we need to make a motion that we declare the...
Deem the building safe.
We deem the building safe.
And once we get approval, well, that's the second one.
Okay.
Now, Sean, that's safe to the public, right? Because it's still, you know, debris and everything.
Should we clarify and say the front is safe?
Yes.
We have to say it's...
You've got the whole building on the agenda.
Do we have to say it's safe? That's not our decision, that's OSHA's.
No. We have to say it's safe, and then OSHA has to say it's safe. We, they have to have, they'll probably have to have something from us saying that we believe it's safe, the town believes it's safe.
OSHA was saying if our engineer checked it out and deemed it was safe, then we could remove the barricade.
So, that was between the engineer and OSHA?
Which is my major concern is where we're marking back up there.
Between our engineer and OSHA?
Yeah. Not us. But anyhow.
I know that's individually, but...
I make a motion to deem the property at 308 Dallas, front wall safe as per our engineer's recommendation.
And we did the front wall? And we did just the front wall? That's what you were...
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Is that legal when you are referring to the building? You're not referring to the front of the building? You either deem the building safe or you don't. You don't deem a portion of that building safe, is that so?
Well, there's only a portion of the building there.
Yeah. I thought theirs left the front, basically.
Deem the whole thing safe when it's not all theirs.
But you're referring to the building, not the front of the building.
Sir, the original issue was, was it safe for the public in the front of the building? Original issue was that front wall coming down, blowing the windows out on anybody in the public walking in front of the building. That's what we're addressing. Is it safe for the public to go around the building?
Any more discussion? Vote. Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
Abstain.
Donna?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Gina? Yes. Item number 16, approve or reject the removal of barricades adjacent to the Faulkner property at 308 Dallas Street.
Okay. I just put that on there because Pam asked me to. It's already been taken care of as far as I'm concerned.
Well, no, it'll have to be voted on with, upon approval for motion.
Yeah. But I mean, as far as we feel.
Okay.
I make a motion to remove the barricades based upon the safety report of our engineer.
And approval for motion.
I...
I second.
I need a second. Discussion? We have a motion.
Are you all right with the, upon approval of motion?
Well, are we waiting on OSHA to come? Because basically, she told...
No, he's just got to let her know and she's got to give us...
Basically, all she said is if he, he said it was safe, that we were fine, that we didn't have to wait on her to say, because she wasn't interested in pictures or anything. She was just wanting our engineer to say that it was safe. So, what my concern is, can we take those barricades down tomorrow? Or are we going to be caught up again in OSHA coming down for another visit? That's what I don't want to get us into.
I think it'd be safe.
Since OSHA started it, they need to...
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think the safer course of action would be to...
That would just be covering all the bases, especially for us legally.
OSHA?
Who called OSHA?
The approval of our engineer.
And OSHA.
Okay.
Can you get us that pretty quick so we can... Donnie, do you have a fax number for her?
Uh, somewhere. I've got a card somewhere.
Fax it.
Yeah, we can fax it.
Read that back.
Rhonda Sears made a motion to remove the barricades upon removal of our, approval of our engineer and OSHA.
Okay. Any more discussion? Vote. Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
Abstain.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 17, discussion and action regarding airport grant.
I've got that on there. Dale and I have been talking and working on trying to utilize the FA money that has been set aside on behalf of the town of Tallahena. I think you saw a copy of that grant at our last meeting. That was basically a $400,000 grant with the tribe matching it with the $38,000. Talked to the tribe this weekend. They had, they're having a meeting today to discuss it and approve it. So, hopefully, within a few days, and I'll see Chief Batten tomorrow at a meeting, and I should get his verbal approval. And then, Pam will be writing us a commitment letter to match the $38,000, which won't cost the citizens anything to upgrade our airport. And Dale, you saw that deal from Dale. Did you bring that? Was that on the agenda, Mary?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Was that agreement on the agenda? We need, we'll probably need to do a special meeting once we get the commitment letter and Dale's contract, it's basically a contract that you had forwarded, wasn't it? And explain. And y'all saw on that grant, the engineering fees and everything that'll be included in the grant, so there won't be any cost to the town of Tallahena. And it'll upgrade our airport to the point where we won't do anything for the next 20 years to it as far as the runway. And so, we should have that commitment letter this week. And when we get that, I'd like for us to be able to call a quick special meeting to go ahead and get this contract going, because we have a deadline and sometime in May that we have to have it. And so, I think we're going to be able to make some things happen.
Does the airport get used?
Yes. Tallahena is the number one destination in central United States right now for the fixed wing gliders. I don't know how many times you see a big, long, white trailer coming through town, but those are gliders and they come from Kansas, Texas, and everywhere to Tallahena. And when they do, they stay night in a motel, they buy gas, they spend money. We, the tribe uses it, fixed wing ambulances, the tribe uses it. In fact, I was talking to one of the tribal members and I need to get this worked on, Dale. They said they had to get within 100 feet of the runway to get the lights to come on. So, we need to look at adjusting those light on the click, on the lights coming on. I had two calls just this last month, people wanting to come in for recreational use. I've noticed that the crop dusters, and I say crop dusters, for me, they're crop dusters, but they're actually turboprop planes that come in and they fill them up with a fertilizer, like a ping pong ball. And they fill them up with fertilizer and they fertilize the plantations down south towards home of the plantation pines. So, it's used quite a bit more than people realize.
The hospital uses it.
Hospital uses it a bunch and flying in doctors and stuff. And if we ever want to grow in our town and create some kind of industry, they want a little airport. They want to be able to fly their executives in and inspect their factories and then get out of town. They don't want to drive a car three hours or four hours to check out their facilities. So, it's an asset that, at no cost to the town, we can improve our value of our asset.
Can I say something? The Chalk Tows have been trying for years to get this airport approved and they're trying to put money in it. So, I feel there will be no snags.
No, there's no, there's no snag.
They've come forth with money. They've been trying to do this for years. 10 years doesn't do it.
I'd like to say something. I think it is very important. We've had many guests come and stay with us that have flown in through the airport, either whether it is, like you said, recreational or whether they have come in because the Chalk Tows have asked them to come in, doctors from Texas, Kansas, anywhere, local city area, that they have had to fly them in for certain particular reasons. And they have stayed with us. So, they do come in here, they do use that, and it's a two for. It's great for the town and it's also great for the Chalk Tows people as well. Thank you.
So, like I said, as soon as I get the verification commitment letter, hopefully this week, I'd like for us to try to have a quick special meeting.
I appreciate it. I have a motion. Item number 18, discussion and action regarding termites in the library building. And this is something that happens quite often on that old building. But Mary's got a...
I've got some information to share with you guys. And the maintenance department advised me that there was a termite infestation in a portion of the library building. So, Keith and I have visited about our options in regard to treating it ourselves or getting someone else to treat it. One of the concerns that Keith had was the fact that some of the patrons of the library have some sensitivities when it, if it comes to us just, you know, spraying in there. He was concerned about causing a problem for them. I was able to get Allstate Termite Pest Solutions, who do our other buildings, to come down and do an inspection at no cost to the city. They did give a quote, and I have copies of that for you now. What they're saying is for $250 for a one-year guaranteed spot treatment. It's a very small area. 10-foot makeshift wall existed between the clinic and the library. And so, the next thing I did was to consider where we were in regard to the budget on library maintenance. And so, you know, there's several things that play here. That building is so old. And so, you know, I didn't know what kind of money you guys want to sink in it, if you want to see what we can handle with our staff and buying some industrial tri- product. I did find a product at Hollins that they felt they could safely recommend to us to use because the hospitals use it locally. They felt like, okay, if the hospitals can use it, then surely your library patrons can handle it. So, that is a backup option, although I don't have a cost for that on you, a cost on that for you. If you do wish to exercise the Allstate option, then we would have to reallocate some money in the budget. Because I wasn't aware of that prior to this meeting, you don't have an agenda item. I do have the numbers crunched where I could get that on the next, the next meeting for you.
Did Allstate say what chemical they were going to use?
They didn't.
So, they're probably going to use Termodor?
I don't have a clue.
That's why I'm saying, I don't see what their chemical would be any less, less than anything we would buy.
Okay. I just wanted you guys to have options, and it didn't cost me anything to get them down here. So, I'll get you a quote.
Why we have to do this every so often? Let's see. No, we did it back in...
To me, it would seem that we could try the chemical at Hollins. It's probably, I'm guessing, $50 bucks or less maybe. And if that didn't work, then let's readdress and reallocate money to go for the professionals. I have no idea what the chemical was at Hollins.
Does this place, like, drill down? I mean, they...
The only thing is, when you do something like this with this company, they're going to know what spots to drill, how to drill, how deep to drill.
At $250, I doubt that they're going. Costs my office $1,500.
Wow.
It's a termite. I mean, if they were, for really truly treating the whole thing, it's going to be a much bigger bill.
Right. It's just such a small space, too, that's affected. It's not the entire building.
And this is the inner wall?
Yes.
See, the last time we had that done, it was an inner wall. It was the other side.
Right. That's why I had to get them down to inspect, too, because, you know, the guys observed a serious infestation. We needed to know to what extent.
Has anybody had experience buying over-the-counter termites?
I've had pretty good luck with some. Yeah, I can't remember. It's a, I think it's a Speckerside that I've gotten before. It's a pretty good one.
So, is that one thing you would be in motion?
I would say let's just, my thinking would be to table this. Let's try what our guys can do. If it doesn't work, let's put it back on the agenda next month.
Okay.
And with the, with the motion to reallocate funds, is that what everybody would like to do?
Yeah, we need to try to...
Take care of it internally.
Yeah. Okay. I'll coordinate with Keith on that and make sure I get some feedback from the guys. Thank you.
Item number 19, discussion and action regarding fees for public records copying. I think we are tabling. No, I didn't.
Oh, no. I just had some background. If y'all need it, if you're tabling, it's no big deal. I just wanted to make sure that you have the resources that you need.
Well, we definitely don't want to deny many of our records to the public. But I also think that we need to have a little bit of respect for our office here and that we need time to get this together. And sometimes, there's more pressing matters that need to be taken care of. Also, there's been some requests for some large publications. Now, coming to a meeting like this and we have agendas for you, that's no problem at all. But what I am concerned with is some of the requests for lots of information, it's tying up our employees' times plus the cost of that. So, we used to, eight, 10 years ago, we used to charge for that. And I know we're trying to be really polite and giving everybody what they need, but I just feel like we probably need to go back to a policy of charging for those pages. If it's one page here or there, it's not a big issue. But if you're requiring a whole handbook or large documents...
We have to pay for our house, not you.
Pardon?
You have to pay for our house, not you.
I have it.
No, I mean, like...
Anybody would.
Yeah. I know I'm...
I must have found a nice guy to charge me. I must have found a nice guy to charge me.
One thing that I've been able to do to keep both the time investment as well as the office expense down is, you know, from, from when I came to the city, everything I have is in digital format. So, certainly not everything that's requested is in digital format, but, um, all of my records are, which is great, because then I can email them, and it's very fast for me, and it doesn't cost you guys any material. So, if it's somebody, you know, that's one thing I ask them, do you guys email? Will you take it in that format? And, and if that's the case, you might want to consider just building that into your policy.
Hey, we're trying to make water payments online.
We're working on it.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have another thing. I forget the name of this call, but your rule code book, I don't know.
Ordinance.
That's this. Your rule book of ordinance? Um, my daughter, she's not here right now, but she was going to actually come up after y'all got situated and suggested internship, oh, sorry, and internships, which would be no cost to the city, and, and sometimes it helps them for their college, things like that. And those that are really good with computers and the internet savvy would just love to put that online for people to be able to visit online at no cost, and that would be another thing the city might...
Great idea.
So, what are our thoughts on this?
Like, probably they sit down and actually formulate an actual policy of some kind.
I know, um, like y'all, my office, they have it posted and...
Right. I mean, if they're running a book of stuff, it's going to be a certain price.
And double-sided is...
Right.
Yes, sir.
The Open Records Act says you can't charge more than twenty-five cents per page. You only charge a dollar for certified copies. So, I mean, I...
Yeah, we charge five cents a page, ten cents, twenty-five cents colored copies, things like that. So, he says we do twenty-five cents a page.
Maximum, maximum.
Twenty-five cents.
Well, even ten cents, that's going to be a lot of...
Yeah.
One question. And are people requesting, like, a full copy of the ordinance or something?
Yes.
This, this is my electoral scan, so we take one half a day and scan.
It'll take one half a day, but y'all...
Well, what I'm saying is, if we could allocate that, because in my business, we have stuff that is outdated, and, you know, like, it, it gets upgraded, but we just scan in the whole manual, and then it can be a digital format copy. Yeah, something like that. And then you could just charge one price for whatever the manual is. You know what I mean? Just spend one of the ordinance, this is fifteen dollars.
Are we ready?
Yeah, I see yours.
Why can't somebody not have nothing to do that no work to do that?
No, we're going to wait. So, we're going to table. Item number twenty, approve or reject allowing Financial Officer Mary Timmons to make online payments for the city's Staples account from previously approved purchase orders.
Make a motion to approve. I see.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Renee?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item number twenty-one, discussion in action regarding updating the signature cards for the town Tallahena bank accounts at the Tallahena branch of this fire estate bank. So, we need to get, you have that ready tonight, don't you?
No, I don't. I, I don't. I spoke to Darlene about it. I wanted to see what you guys decided, and here's why. We know we need to take Jackie off. We know we need to add Renee on. Um, and I wanted you guys to take, you know, into consideration whether or not you wanted to add John on there. Obviously, you don't want to put me on there because that's a big no-no with internal controls, um, but it certainly would be helpful, or at least a time saver for me, if we had John on there.
Well, and we have to have a copy at the minute saying that we approved that and went to the bank first.
Oh, yeah. Oh, of course. Right. Right. Yes, ma'am, you're right.
Is John bonded yet?
Yes.
So, do we need to sit on this?
No.
We need to clarify that. Yeah, because she's got to get it at the minute, so we've got to get that over.
Is there any problem with us putting John on with anybody?
I don't see a need to put him on, to be honest with you.
Well...
I mean, he's not an officer of the town, and it should be just the officers that actually sign the checks.
I agree. But our clerk has always been on the signature...
Yeah. It's, we're the ones responsible.
And our clerk is on our signature card now.
My heart. Utility.
Our utility clerk, yeah.
It's just, it requires three signatures, and so, sometimes it's hard to get everybody to get them out.
If you have to do it now, it got to be a little difficult, but as long as we make sure that we are all available.
Even I just think, I was thinking, I could sign. I just think that...
I think it needs to be an actual officer personally, or y'all can make a motion.
I think, my opinion is that he needs to be on there for, uh, nothing else convenience wise, but...
I think John would, would do what you're...
Well, it's not that I don't trust John, but I still think when we're dealing with the public's money, it ought to be an officer that actually signs the check. So, I'm going to make a motion that we add Renee and nobody else to the signature card.
You want to remove Jackie?
And remove Jackie, yes.
So, when I tip this to Darlene, this will be to...
Remove Jackie and add Renee.
Well, the way, the way I'll write it will be that you made the motion for Renee, for yourself, for Donna, or for Rhonda, for June and myself.
Right. The elected officials.
Okay.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-two, discussion in action, discussion in action regarding the lease and maintenance proposal for newer office equipment. I believe they are waiting on some more information on that. It's a coffier that we're looking into, so we're going to take no action. Item number twenty-three, discussion in action regarding cemetery mowing. Um, see, in the past, I know that Rocky was paid two times a month at the amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
A month or each time?
Each time. So, uh, so I didn't, we don't, do we have Rocky this year, or is he...
Well, here's what happened, um, if I can share, here's what happened. So, he, he takes care of all the mowing, weed eating, and so, so when I came in, um, I was advised that he always got paid on the first and the fifteenth. I ran some numbers for you guys. For the calendar year 2013, that totaled eleven-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. That oddball number predates me. It was from some gas. That was kind of random. But 2014, uh, I was here for that. It, it came up to ten-thousand-five-hundred. Normally, it would go from, like, April to September, but sometimes it would start sooner, um, based on, you know, weather, grass, all that kind of stuff. So, basically, what happened was I had asked Mayor England, and I said, you know, we really need to review this and, and see, you know, what the council wants to do, what she agreed. So, um, that's why it's on this agenda, but prior to that, he did go ahead and service the cemetery twice. I've paid him seven-fifty once, and then he'll be paid again on the fifteenth, and then he has been advised by, uh, former Mayor England that it was up for negotiation.
Okay. So, we just need to decide if we want to go out for bids?
We, we have people coming in interested all the time.
Yeah, they're all the time.
May I clarify something, please? Um, he's not paid seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for mowing the cemetery one time. When I spoke with Rocky, he says he works on that cemetery usually five, sometimes six days a week, mowing, and that he's spending anywhere between three to five hours a day mowing. When I asked him how long it usually took him to go through the cemetery once, he says, well, I never really kept track of all of it, but I would guess it's well over thirty hours to go through that cemetery, mow, weed eat, and all that. Uh, when you figure that, divide out what he's getting a month by those numbers of hours, he's getting approximately twelve dollars an hour to mow. He's providing all of his own gasoline. He's providing wear and tear on his lawnmower and weed eaters. Before we had Rocky, we were buying a new lawnmower each year and new weed eaters each year because they were just getting wore out, tore out, whatever. And I've been on this council now ten years, and it's the best look we've ever had for the cemetery. And we went through trying to find cheaper people to do the cemetery, and it never worked out, and we were getting complaints, or I was the one calling complaining around Memorial Day. I'd be up there death writing graves, and I'd be, Jackie, the cemetery's awful.
I know.
And it was at the last minute, getting people out there trying to keep it up. We don't have that concern with Rocky, and that means a lot to me, to have a valued employee that will take care of this and invest in his own equipment to do it.
I know that Kenny and I mowed it one holiday when we didn't have anybody for Memorial Day, I believe, and it was a chore.
I have a question about the cemetery fund. Is there a Davis or something sort of memorial cemetery fund that the city maintains or how does that work? Is anybody familiar with that?
I'm not sure.
There is a cemetery.
There is a cemetery trust that's, that's managed by Mary, uh, Mary Ann Coleman and Nate the Carmen, and they do give money periodically. Uh, I have brought this up many times at this council or board, uh, that we spend, which I don't think it's bad, the ten thousand, because when you look at how big that cemetery is and what's required, it's probably not a bad price.
So, land it.
But we have to work on the revenue side of it and improve the revenue. We bring in about thirty-five-hundred a year, and, and we spend about ten, and so, we have to work more with Mary Ann and Nate on the trust fund that was set up by, uh, Clark Chapman. We need to look at charging more than a hundred dollars for a grave site. I mean, where else can you go spend a hundred dollars for a grave site and expect it to be mowed from now on? It doesn't happen anywhere. So, we need to actually look at some comparisons on raising the values of the, of the plots. We need to look at, uh, doing more fundraising, uh, because we haven't really done a whole lot of fundraising. And we need to look at our internment. Uh, we charge a hundred-and-twenty-five to go open a grave and close a grave, and maybe we need to look at that. And, and, and we actually voted, didn't we vote last month, the month before last, to, uh, to start looking at, because a lot of times, we'll go open a grave and nobody pays us. You know? No, the city, the city does some. So, we need to look at the revenue side for sure.
In, in Wilberton, right outside of Wilberton, there's a consignment store or a parish store, and their proceeds go to their cemetery.
Their cemetery?
Is that what, something you want to do?
Um, me personally, I don't have any assets here in town that actually buy into that, but it doesn't mean that the population...
We couldn't have a garage sale once a year and, and for the cemetery or something.
Absolutely. Now, there's other things that we could get into.
Yeah. Does your budget include the flags for the cemetery?
No.
No?
Well, I say no. It's, it's just maintenance for the cemetery. I guess it theoretically could, but...
Well, the PFW was supplying those flags, and now that they ain't going to be here, I don't know if the local government would want to supply the flag.
I got faith in you making that happen.
They're thirty dollars.
Yeah, what did we just pay for those two flags that we just got?
I already got it set to get two more flags.
Twenty-five?
The PFW will pay for two more flags, but after that...
Where was the eight by, four by eight, four by six flag go? Where did it go?
The smaller one was here, and the two bigger ones were for the cemeteries.
Okay. So, they just bought, just bought flags for the cemetery.
She did? Okay.
So, a block cost a hundred dollars, and then to open and close is a hundred...
Hundred-and-twenty-five. I think it's on a regular day, week, regular weekday, holidays and weekends.
We're on a weekday.
Huh?
That's what everybody says. If we're on a weekday.
That's right.
So, what's your guy in front of them then?
I believe Mary has...
I wanted to update the council. Um, one of the great things about having John as utility clerk, he's very computer-savvy, and he also has a degree in drafting, and so, one of the things that Keith and I have been talking about since the day I came was the desperate need we have to get these cemetery records in digital format, not only the new cemetery, but for the old cemetery, where we actually don't have records, but we have some, uh, senior women in the community who have volunteered to transfer what they know to get that on paper. It's very important to do that. And John's just tuning up the workload in there, and he's actually gotten started on that. So, what we're doing as far as, um, the cemetery plots that he's plotting in a spreadsheet is doing it in such a way that if you're familiar with Microsoft Office, it can be done in a mail merge, and so, then that could be done to generate, based on the burial list, a solicitation of families for donations. So, that's a, that's a project in progress in the office now.
Thank you very much.
So, Sean, am I not correct? If we're happy with the price that Rocky has given us, there's no need for us to go out for bids, that we do not have to go out each year for bids on this, correct? As long as he has not increased his price?
Yes.
So, if we're happy with Rocky is taking care of the cemetery, there's no need to put a motion on here?
I think so.
Thank you.
So...
Is everybody happy with that?
City guys are going to put the flags up in the cemetery or not?
I...
Yes.
Sure they will.
Yes.
All right. I think we're talking about two different things. Larry, you're talking about the small flags that go in the graves that...
No, we'll put those out anyhow.
Oh, your input does that anywhere. You're talking about the big flag.
I've got all those flags and, uh, we do it, uh...
Yes, street guys will put up the large flags, no problem.
The fighting before. No, whoever. Those guys, they can't walk anymore, so usually, two guys will put them out.
Everybody okay with no action?
No action.
Huh?
Why can't you get the council to help do that? Well, my... That's what they did. It's just, well, that's someone out there.
Okay. Red action. White action. Item number twenty-four, discussion in action regarding a phone line for the swimming pool.
Remember, we cut this off to save us money. That phone line was running us, uh, thirty-five, forty dollars a month, I believe, and we decided to cut it off. I think it's very important that we put it back on now when we have the pool, pool open for safety. And then what...
That, that's a question in and of itself. Are we going to open the pool? I mean, we lost fifteen thousand last year, thirty thousand a year before. Um, maybe we need to have a meeting to discuss some options on the swimming pool. And have we approached anybody, department with us, to do some programs, to help supplement that, subsidize that pool? Uh, I'm, I'm the world's first to tell you, I think it's great for the kids. It's very much important that we do something for our kids, but when we're seventy, almost seventy thousand dollars, and we're, and we've lost ALCO, and that sixty-five thousand that's in this budget won't be here again next year, we better start thinking about looking at the number very closely. And so, I would suggest we table this and have a, a meeting or special meeting or something and discuss the options on what we can do on that swimming pool.
So, council wants to do?
No, I want to move forward and open the pool.
Move forward.
Because we have the money budget in here. Our kids deserve to have that pool open.
You're talking about finding help for it, Rhonda.
Okay. But whether we have somebody else come in and help us sponsor this pool or not, we need to have a phone up there for the safety of our kids when they're swimming in case there was an emergency.
All right, to show you the deal.
Well, I think that you have to, they sort of go together. Why can't you discuss it all together, sort of, when you have a, a meeting and talk about if there are other...
We're in April, and the pool will open at the end of May, so there's not much time.
I don't understand why you're opposed to having a meeting first to discuss if somebody else could help you with the costs of the pool.
Time-wise, we need to move on to get our personnel in place. We can't wait to do that. Now, if somebody else wants to step forward and help us sponsor that, that's not going to affect the decision of whether we need to have a phone up there or not.
Well, it does, if we decide we don't need to open it.
Yep.
We could have, you could approve this on me.
And then have a special...
We have a special question that I have to do.
I have to be one first.
I'm sorry. I have a question. What is the timeframe from what time to what time does the pool stay open?
Are you talking about calendar days or time-wise?
I'm talking about days and hours.
Okay. We usually open that whenever Memorial Day weekend is, which is typically the end, last part of May. We close it before school opens, or before school opens, and this year, I believe, we closed it July thirty-first. I think we shut it off right at the end of July to try to save us that last little bit of labor on there. Pool-wise operation of hours, it opens at noon, they swim until five o'clock in the evening, and then we have two pool parties, and the pool parties are two hours each.
Those are paid for advance, though, are they not?
So, they are, and there's another agenda item on there.
So, that wouldn't be...
How much is the child going to cost monthly?
Mary, when we shut that phone off, was it not around forty dollars?
It was around thirty-five, forty. Can't you not just open up a little bit earlier and just get more money for more kids?
You know, you're, you still have more payroll, pool expenses. And we'll, if we get this business taken, then we will turn that phone on right so that it comes on right when the board's on. It's not like we're going to turn the phone on today, it's sitting there for a month. So, I make a motion to install a phone line.
I think a cellular landline is a lot cheaper.
It is. I think you're right.
I have a problem with cellular, though. Like, today, I couldn't use my cellular phone because of the rain and, and different clouds and things.
It shouldn't affect so much.
I don't have any trouble either.
So, would, do you have to have a cell, don't you have to have wireless internet? Is it able to do that?
It's just, it just connects to your phone that you kept sitting there. It connects in with it, and it has its little app, you use your own phone.
You're talking about voice over internet protocol? Magic jet?
Magic jet. Oh, I love that.
No, I wasn't, no, I'm not talking about that. No, I'm talking about, US Cellular's got them. It's, it's a little, uh, little box that you plug into your telephone. They take the existing number, and you use your own phone, and it's on a cell phone.
Then somebody would have to use their own personal cell phone the whole day there and leave it there.
No, it's home phone.
It hooks into your phone, your base phone, your home phone. And all it is, is, instead of getting a cell phone from US Cellular, you buy a base phone that sits by your telephone, and it hooks into that, and your telephone works off of a cell phone.
Does the other companies besides US Cellular have that?
Does Fine Cellular have that?
Because why I'm asking, I did that at home, and I got it down here, and because we're roaming with US Cellular in this area, it wouldn't work, so I had to take it back.
Okay. I don't know if we all saw it. You can use US Cellular, and it always worked fine.
Mine wouldn't at home, and that, and they told me it was because we were roaming.
Won't be roaming there.
So you wanna get option before we?
The pool, I mean, roaming right here.
Before we do this, or?
You're worried about the phone.
It seems there's a lot of discussion about it.
I think we have, if we have a special meeting on the phone, we can do that, we're looking at the calendar.
Do that in two weeks.
We can do it in two weeks.
That'd be great.
So we'll table the phone. And item number twenty-five, twenty?
No, I don't wanna table everything.
Okay, we table item number twenty-four. Item number twenty-five, discussion and action regarding the pool party rate.
To help us generate more funds, under control, um, somebody ask my lifeguard, my pool manager, who I think is out there. Oh, there they are, okay. The pool is never gonna break even, we're never gonna make money, but we need to try to be as business oriented as we can, and to try to cover as much funds as we can. That's what we owe as good stewards of the public funds. So, I don't think anybody out here would expect to go into a business and say, "I only wanna pay twenty-five dollars for that room tonight, I know it's costing you fifty." As a business person, you can't do that. You have to make, at least cover your costs. You have some things you give away, and if you choose to give away a night's day, or if you choose to give away a hamburger, it's okay, but on a day-to-day basis, you can't give away what you're selling.
You can't cover the costs, is what you're saying.
So what we're trying to do, last year, we raised the pool entrance rates three dollars, and that helped greatly break, bring that gap. We decided to sell concessions that broke our gap more. For the first time ever, we made money on concessions. And it ended up, our managers were leery about it, they didn't know what I was asking them to do, but it turned out, they said it'd be easier. And it was a positive experience for everybody. We had people coming up to the pool just to buy a candy bar and a pop, just to help us out. So, you know, that shows that people understand that you have to make money to do this, to at least try to cover some of your expenses. What we found out last year is when we set the pool price at sixty dollars, we didn't consider when we have a hundred or more people swimming at a time, or when we have seventy-five people or more. We figured the sixty dollars, we figured we were covering the cost of the labor, and a little bit extra to cover chemicals, electricity. But what I presented to the board is when you have to have enough lifeguards for a hundred people, you're losing money in that pool party. Two, we figured out, if you're having fifty to seventy-five people swimming, you need to have a minimum of three lifeguards there and a manager. And that cost us, just in labor, seventy-three dollars. So we can't give it away at sixty. But what we really got into last year, and I don't know, these ladies are much more calm than I am, go up there, and we were at that max on that pool. And that's usually when KDA comes in to swim. They had every lifeguard, both managers there. I was there filling up concession stands. And Sherry's like, "Just a minute, Rhonda, I have to watch." By all means, watch. But it was a big responsibility on these people to watch when that pool is maxed. And we made sixty dollars. We brought in, excuse me, we brought in sixty dollars for that, but we were spending a little over a hundred and fifty. So, yes, I want the pool open. I want this for our tourists, I want this for our guests, I want it for our residents to go up there and enjoy. But we need to set it at a price that everybody can live with, and that we can cover our costs.
Sure, makes sense.
Could it be done perfe, instead of just block amounts or pool party? Fifty, hundred, hundred and fifty, two hundred, whatever, that kind of thing?
You can to a degree, but if you say, "Okay, everybody comes in and gives me three dollars for how many people," and you have ten people coming, okay, you got thirty dollars you've made.
Yeah, but if you bought the pool, if you ordered a pool party and said, "We're gonna have a hundred fifty people there," you paid for fifty people, you've bought the pool for this long. And if you say, "We're gonna have a hundred," we paid for a hundred, you can't control the fact that, "I only have four friends, so five of us show up, we bought for a hundred."
They got the warrants for the amount of lifeguards they get for a child.
Yeah, my concern is knowing how many people we're gonna have there, so that we can staff it correctly.
Right.
Rhonda, he's making sense.
Okay.
You have, uh?
Like he's, like you're telling me they're gonna tell you how many people are there.
Right, no, they're gonna tell you how many people they invited. Well, you need to, if only five, yeah, but I know what I'm saying, is you plan for, they say a hundred people are coming, so you plan for a hundred, you hire enough lifeguards for a hundred people, ten people show up, too bad, they're gonna pay to have a hundred people there.
And that's how it is.
That's how I do the trucking. I got a four hundred dollar minimum, and if anything over a hundred miles, I could go up.
You should know if you sell a block, a fifty or a block of a hundred.
Exactly.
If they have twenty coming, they still pay for a block of fifty.
Which is basically what I did. If you let me go over this real quick, I think I pretty much covered what you're doing. So, what I've just set up, and the council has the right to move these numbers any way you want, but just for me to figure it out, if they have zero to fifteen guests, it's sixty dollars. Okay? If they have fifteen to fifty guests, it's seventy-five. Fifty to seventy-five, it's a hundred dollars, and seventy-five to a hundred, it's a hundred and fifty. However, let's say they come, and that fifteen part, they paid sixty dollars for those first fifteen people, the five friends tag along, they owe us three dollars each for those extra five people. So is that what you're saying, sir?
Yeah.
That they're paying that extra?
Yes.
Now, the thing that we may get into is that, if they come up with five extra friends, that's not a problem for our one lifeguard. They come up with ten extra, Shannon's gonna be on the phone real quick trying to find another lifeguard, and that's a problem that I'm worried about. Yeah, it actually gets them up to the next lot where it saves them money. Yes, it's cheaper for them to buy the larger party, it saves them money.
Does your lots, does your lots that you suggest there, does that cover the cost of our lifeguards and the other expenses?
It covers the cost of the lifeguards, the managers, and you've got about twenty-four, twenty-five dollars extra in there that should cover some of your electricity and things.
So are you at least breaking even?
I think we'll be coming close to breaking even.
No, not when you count the chemicals and everything, water.
At least to break even.
I think, I think if you get it up much higher, you're not gonna have people able to afford it.
You'll sell popping candy, too.
There's that, sometimes they'll come in and buy the popping candy.
Do you know how many parties are usually booked over the summer typically?
It fills out.
Is it?
Every day is booked, is it not?
Unless there's bad weather, and those years that we have bad weather, then we lose.
If the price is raised, do you estimate that it would be over if you raise the price? If the pool, if the pool parties were bought out, very, very blocked with the increase?
I think you may lose a few with the increase, but I think your larger parties, our understanding that it's still a good buy.
Because in business, usually when the cost for demand goes up, you usually raise the cost, is that not something that we normally do, and from our vision?
Yeah, we raised a little bit last year.
I think you ought to tell the people up front, if they buy a block of twenty, that's the limit. That way you know how, how the right employee, if they think they're gonna be more, make them go to the next level. That way you're covered, you don't have to try to transfer with people, you know how many people's coming. If you say, "Well, I'm gonna add another person," you're making this money, but if you specifically say, "You buy a block of twenty, or twenty-five, or fifty, whatever, and charge them the price, and if they want more than that, they're out of luck."
Yeah, they don't understand that upfront.
You can't just sit out there and say, "Well, I'll fill him."
Yeah, there's, there's no pool I've ever been involved with over the years that didn't do that for a party. You know, if you, if you over, if you book for X number of people, and, you know, twenty more show up, you know, they're gonna have to pay for the next step higher so you get another lifeguard in there, or they don't come in because it's, it's a safety hazard at that point, and then the city's liable, and you're not gonna do it.
Yes, sir.
What is the legal limit? The legal limit, you want, is how, how many people?
Hundred and fourteen, is it?
But that's way too many. I mean, but that's what, that's what the sign says, hundred and fourteen. Does that need to be reassessed?
It got close. Sherry, we were counting that night, weren't we? We were counting it.
It looks like the Titanic out there, I mean, there's no room at all. That's why we're a lot.
Okay, let's go ahead, what are we, uh?
Discussion from the council?
Again, I don't think we need to be doing anything till we discuss some options. You're kinda putting the cart ahead of the horse, in my opinion, but, you know, until we discuss some other options, why would I vote to do something I know is gonna cost money, is gonna lose us money? And we don't have much money to begin with, but it's further than the home, so.
Pardon me?
You may not wanna go after people that I'm.
What did it say?
Where you're getting ready for this, too.
That's not where we're at, my.
Yes, I didn't.
Yeah, that's not where we're at.
Finish this one.
Okay. Sherry, Shannon, did you think this schedule was doable? I'll make a motion to adjourn to present a price schedule for pool parties.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any more discussion? So. Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
No.
Donnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Item number twenty-six, discussion and action regarding lock cleanup.
I don't know my name, but I haven't got anything on that.
I think with our work being out, it has gotten behind, but we are working on, do you know how these prepare? What I did is I wrote notes on the front of what is needed. This is, uh, Linda Harris. This is the Burn House. And, um, the, my suggestions are just on the front, that they need a, she's got a courtesy letter on, the ones that the Harrises, she's inclined to do a certified letter on this. Courtesy letter on five oh one.
Okay, this one, the picture, Gina, is one twenty-eight, two thousand and fifteen, do we have a current picture on this one? Because it doesn't look like this now.
These aren't current pictures.
It's not a current picture.
This is, uh, was January.
Okay, I drove by that house, it doesn't look like that.
Okay, um, this is on five oh one.
Okay, again, this picture is old. Let's wait, Gina.
I can take three pictures, but somebody took my car, so I don't have a car to even...
Yeah, because the grass is brown here, and actually, this lot looks a lot worse now, I'm just driving by, but we need to have a current picture in here.
Yeah, on my question with that, now that I don't have a city car? We'll work on it. Okay, give me.
What happened to the city car?
They struck it for one of the police officers. They had a car go out, the Rick's car, wasn't it? Justin?
Slower.
Yeah. Okay, um.
We'll do no action on twenty-six?
I think, yes, sir. Okay, item number twenty-seven, approve or reject entering into executive session consistent with Title twenty-five Oklahoma State Statutes three oh seven B one, discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salary public officer or employee, pool employees.
Make a motion to approve?
I second that motion. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Okay, we're talking about the pool?
No, we're talking, we're voting to executive session. No, twenty-second.
We're just talking about going into executive session.
Yes, since we're just voting to go into executive.
Into executive, okay.
Yes. Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
No.
Donna?
Yes, do a second.
Donna?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be out for a minute. Next item, number twenty-eight, approve or reject exiting from executive session?
Make a motion to exit?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Vote. Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine, action if any from executive session?
We make a motion to table the hiring of lifeguards and managers until special meeting Thursday, April twenty-third.
So that will be tabled.
Yeah, I don't think a motion is required to table.
Just how we put in the minutes that we're gonna, when the meeting is gonna be, April twenty-third. Thank you.
Okay, item number thirty, approve or reject entering into executive session consistent with Title twenty-five Oklahoma State Statutes thirty of three oh seven B one, discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salary public officer or employee. Donna Gravis, Gina Jones, Mary Tennant.
I make a motion, go on executive session?
A second.
We have a motion in a second, any more discussion?
Who's second?
Renee. Vote. Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Okay, item number thirty-one, approve or reject exiting from executive session?
I make a motion, please.
We have a motion?
A second.
In a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Item number thirty-two?
Before we go on, and just let the public know what we discussed.
Well, that's what this is.
Oh, is it?
Item number thirty-two, action if any from executive session?
Uh, what we discussed in executive session, basically, is job descriptions, since we have a new clerk on hand, to make sure that everybody's clear what their responsibilities were, and so we just basically discussed job descriptions.
Item number thirty-three, new business? Is there any new business for the town?
I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. It shows good heart to know that people are concerned about their community, want to work and do something, so be ready to roll up your sleeves and work hard. Uh, I'd like to also thank our former mayor, Jackie, who's not here, for her years of service. She put in a lot of years, and so, wanna let you know, we appreciate what she's done. And like I said, appreciate y'all being, appreciate y'all being here and being concerned about our community, so, that being said, thank you.
Gina, can you give us a little update on the trash?
On the trash? Trash, I'm printing my news article, I sent it again to a lady that said, "Send it to me and I'll make sure it gets in," but I've sent it two weeks in a row.
Cal?
What?
You may need to hear this.
Oh, I sent it to him.
Okay.
A newspaper article on the trash-off day, it didn't make it in the paper.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, well, I emailed it to Sherry today, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's April twenty-fifth, right?
Yes, and it is, they're gonna bring two roll-offs, and they will be put out in Monsters parking lot across the street from Monsters Furniture. The trash company will leave them there, they'll bring them in on Friday, the trash-off is on Saturday, um...
Eight to noon, isn't it?
Eight to noon, and you are welcome, though, the dumpsters will be there all week, all weekend. They'll pick them up on Monday, so if you have something you can't get out there between eight and noon, you have until Sunday evening, Monday morning.
We'd really like to have groups come and help us pick up the town, so if you, and I have one youth group that I've contacted that's gonna come and help us pick up trash, but anybody else would be, excuse me, be very welcome. One thing that might be in need is we've got some elderly people in the community that would like to have stuff picked up, but we don't really have any men, strong men or women with trailers or trucks that could go get it for them to bring down to the roll-offs. So if anybody could help us with that, that would be greatly appreciated.
So if you'd like to volunteer, just let us know, and, Rhonda is, are you organizing?
You're organizing.
Okay. Okay, just let me know then. Item number thirty-four.
About twenty minutes. We got new business here.
Do we take new business on the board?
I think that that's a public forum. Public forum.
This is a public forum.
There's a part, like Gina did set up for public forum.
I think everybody allows a speech.
You're gonna want to hear this, trust me.
At what point can we listen to you? Yeah, at what point can we listen to him?
I mean, I don't mind hearing it, but we can't necessarily take any action or anything.
Attorney's were called to that, so you need to be aware that there's a discrimination
and harassment lawsuit coming. I wanted to be here as an intermediate, intermediary, to give y'all a heads up and see if you wanted to correct this on your own, or if it's put back in my court, I go national with it. It's gonna be a good one.
And what is your name?
I'm Dave Galbert. I have four businesses around this community. This was an employee of mine that's been harassed for years now. It's cost me thousands of dollars. And I can give you a rundown now, if you want.
We probably shouldn't do it. Would you be willing to come and talk in executive session if we set up an agenda item and have an executive session? Are you willing to give us the opportunity to actually hear what the concerns are? Why don't we put on, are you willing to wait till next month?
I'm for the city.
Yeah.
Because if it goes back to me, it's, I told...
And I agree, if there's a problem, we need to look at it and see what we need to do.
Settle it quickly.
Well, let's do it next week's regular session. I think. Would you be willing to wait till next month, Dave? The next, I mean, we could probably, we could probably do it, we could probably do the same night at the pool, which is next Thursday.
Yeah.
Not next, not this coming up Thursday, but a week from Thursday. The twenty-third, would you be willing to?
I, I will, but I can only counsel my worker to hold on.
Okay, and is he willing to come and address us, too?
I'm sure he will.
Okay, 'cause I'd like, I'd like, I think we need to hear what it is, and see if there's a solution that we can come up with to take care of this problem. This is the first, well, I say, I heard from another individual that there, that there was this problem yesterday. And, and...
It's been going on.
I did today.
And, so...
On and on and on, and I'm finding it harder to...
I can assure you that...
Are you a lawyer, or?
No, I'm not. I'm just the voice for this, this man.
Employer.
He's working.
Employer, okay.
And we, I'd love, I'd love to hear what the problem is and see if we can find a solution to resolve it, 'cause it's better to sit down and put heads together than it is to let some third party figure it out for us. And so if we can put that on the agenda for our special meeting on the 23rd.
Do you have a card?
Now, Sean, would that be under, that'd be under employee B, B1, wouldn't it?
I don't, I don't know nothing about.
Whatever, if, if, if regards to an employee. Say the employee is. I think it'd be under B1.
Let me, let me do this, let me, let me talk with him and find out the gist of it, while you guys are doing your public works, I mean, let me, let me talk with him and then I'll be able to tell you whether it's something on executive session or if it's something that we need to do as part of, just part of the regular meeting, okay?
Okay.
Let me touch base with him.
Is that all right? I'm happy with y'all.
For the person who put the Tallina Public Works Agenda on here, telling us if anything to discuss not on the agenda, we're not under public works, we're under the town, so that's why I know it's not on the agenda.
That's Mary DeBrue. Okay, item number 34.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion?
A second.
And a second, any more discussion? Vote. Renee?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes.
I call this meeting the order of the Board of Trustees of the Tallina Public Works Authority. You'll wait for a second while John gets over here.
We don't have the minutes for these.
What?
We just have, we just have the town meetings, didn't we? Minutes for the town meeting?
Um, I have minutes for the Board of Trustees February 9th.
All I had was, you know.
I don't think, I have them in front of me.
What do you need, because they've been there about two months, and I know it's hard to get them back here, so I have extra copies for you.
On public works?
Sure. You bet, here's March the 9th and March the 13th.
Item number 2, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of minutes of the meeting held November 10th, 2014. There's no action.
We don't have February either, I think.
No, I don't think so.
Well, I have this one. Is that it tonight? Yeah. It's all over it. Mary, you got another public works, please, agenda?
Uh, agenda? Yeah, I have one.
Minutes, minutes, or agenda?
No, agenda, she's seeing one.
Sure.
Here, I have two.
Oh, we got one.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no. Oh, yes, here we go.
They're mine, they're mine.
Okay. Item number 3, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of minutes of meeting held February 9th.
Make a motion to approve?
I haven't gotten that one.
Yeah.
Do you have it?
Mary just turned it.
I just have March 13th and 9th.
I have one.
Those are, uh, I remember February and March are parts, did I, I remember having submitted to me, I just have the one that Donna and John did.
Here's 15th, or 9th February, ain't there?
No, I understand that, I'm talking about, oh, that's March, is it?
No, that's February.
Oh, so you do have it, okay.
Rhonda, Rhonda had it.
I have it.
Okay, awesome.
I'll need a copy of that, I wasn't here, does anybody need this copy?
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion?
I made the motion. We're waiting on a second.
I'll second that motion. Any more discussion? Vote.
Renee? John?
Yes.
Donna?
Epstein.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Item number 4, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of minutes of the meeting held March 9th, 2015.
Make a motion to approve?
I second that motion. Any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Epstein.
John?
Go ahead and go by me.
Donna?
Stain.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes. Those minutes, didn't it?
We're waiting on Donnie. We've got, um, it's only two.
Yes.
Item number 5, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of minutes of the meeting held March 13th, 2015.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Epstein.
Donna?
Yes.
John?
Epstein.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Item number 6, approve or reject public works purchase orders. Does anybody have a chance?
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Have the person to approve.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 7, public form, is there anyone here for the public form?
Yes. I'm Gary Walton, Valise Sefton.
Yes, sir.
I would like to request a permit to dump Sefton at the land out here. I talked to Mike Robinson, heard he didn't say there was no reason to, so people, over a permit to me to dump Sefton.
I, uh.
DQ man.
Man, sir.
DQ Robinson, said there's no reason that I should not be able, and I'm having to go to Wilton, I could pay $100 a month to the city of Delaware.
I think, I know part of the concern was before that when y'all dumping the sewer lagoons, they have to remove their aerators constantly to remove all the crap.
They told you to be bringing the old field stuff in here and dumping it.
Okay.
Sefton is not, is not.
And since y'all haven't been dumping anymore, we've not had to pull those aerators, but.
Well, they did that too, 'cause the pump went out on one, the motor went out on one of them.
Besides that, it wasn't beach to clean them.
But for the DQ, there's no reason.
We can't, we can't do.
It's on all the people in the whole valley to cover the cost to go into Wilton in the back, and I contribute $100 a month to the city to dump them.
I'm, I'm in favor of letting Gary do something, what it is, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm in favor of letting him dump out there, 'cause what he, little bit he's gonna dump is not gonna amount to much. Now, if there's a protocol that we have to go through to allow him to dump, then we need to identify that protocol.
Right, I'll figure a little bit, the, we gotta watch yours sometime.
And, but we can't actually do anything tonight.
Right.
We have to put it back on the agenda, so.
Next month? Next month on March, uh, May?
Well, it'd be May, uh, something.
I know, I know.
But you need to be here, because it's been on the agenda several times.
It'd be May the 11th, and, and, and talk to Mike, see if you can get a letter from Mike and stuff, so we can show the board members that there's not really a problem.
Right.
And then if there's a protocol that we need to go through to, as you dump it, we can look at, and then we can actually look at a structure of some kind.
Can I ask Dale your opinion on that, please?
Typically, when you, when you day trash like that, you have them running through a bar screen or something like that to keep the debris, like you were talking, talking about, that's a maintenance issue for everybody, buddy to run these lagoons. I don't recall if your lagoons have a bar screen in them, I have to go back and look at the plans, I don't recall. But typically, that's, you know, that's what you would do, because there is a lot of trash in, in Sefton towns. Still, I mean, it, it ain't like, like, like the old field, but there is, there is a lot of.
Like, but that's what I'm saying.
A lot of, a lot of plastics and strings and everything.
Yeah, I have a work party.
That really need to get removed, so you don't put all that debris in your lagoons, because once you put that debris in your lagoons, then the city has a major expense of removing it. Because you just can't take it and go do whatever you want with it. And, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a hazardous material, it's gotta be tested, it's gotta be incorporated into the soil properly, it's, you know, it's a DQ issue to do it, and me and Mary's been talking about those lagoons, probably need to be cleaned out even.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We'll start looking at some logistics and see if there's a way we can figure it out.
Okay.
And we'll put it back on the agenda for you.
Okay.
Okay?
May the 11th.
11th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
I don't think it's a holiday, it's an actual. I said, I was looking up the schedule, I don't think it's a holiday.
Gary?
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 Gary, leave your phone, I'm.
413, yeah, there you go, 41318.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The 31, is the 567 number still going, Gary?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, but this is your cell.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Gary.
See y'all there.
Hi, Gary.
Are we still on the public?
Yep.
Yes, we are.
Hi, I'm having, Gina, I'm having to replace my ice machine, and we got to the bottom of the bin and the ice, well, as you say, it's pretty disgusting, and it's because of water and everything. I have any filters on my ice machine, but this new one I'm getting, I'm getting filters. What kind of filters do I get, do y'all know?
You know. You need, my ice machine has a filter, and it's, it has a number where you reorder it and everything, I didn't know there was no, ice machines without a filter. You have to replace those every six months, Sam.
Okay.
Six months to a year, you have to replace those, and if you don't, what happened to me is my exploded, water coming everywhere.
Okay, this ice machine's like 20 years old, so.
See, we change arms out there, it's gone.
Now, I have a bottle separate, they come with the ice machine?
You might ask whoever you get the ice machine from.
And they'll give you a book. So I should all have to change it out every six months?
Six months to a year, so what's your recommendation on my ice machine?
All right.
That's on you. Thanks, Sam.
Your hands on the side of the filter, and how many guys can make them?
Item number 8, financial report, Mary will email those to us as soon as we're ready. Item number 9, approve or reject payment of invoice number TAL140102 to Infrastructure Solutions Group LLC in the amount of $1,060 for reed sewer system improvements.
This is part of your reed grant for the wastewater system itself, and the project is out for bid, we're gonna open the bids Tuesday.
But this, this is the sewer.
Next Tuesday.
This is sewer lines up in Meta Heights.
This is just work that we've done on that project, this all comes out in grant money.
Okay. Make a motion to approve?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
And for y'all that don't know, this is actually replacing sewer lines up in Meta Heights, the bid's for 1,800 feet?
Well, we'll build whatever the bids have, I mean, that's.
Right, but I mean, that's what the bids went out for, was 1,800, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's.
And if it, if it can't pay for 1,800, we'll do 1200, we'll do whatever we can pay for.
With the grant.
With the grant.
Item number 10, approve or reject change order number 7 for Collins Waterworks LLC for water distribution system improvements.
This was part of our water system project, okay, where we did some line, line work in town, we've actually paid him his, his final payment. I was going back and going through, through the books, the budget, make sure everything, this is, this is something that should have been removed from his contract, just to make everything even.
Okay.
You really don't change our budget or anything else.
So the, so the change is not to add any money, but to remove it from the original contract?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's, it's a quantity issue.
I think I've seen the copy of that last month.
It's been a couple of months since, since I, I, I did the change order, but it seemed like to me it was a one less additional valve that actually wasn't installed or something like that.
Do we have that copy here in the office, John, or? John or Mary?
I have it.
You have it, okay, thank you. No, I don't need to review it, I just wanted to make sure we had it here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we do.
And it was work that didn't, wasn't performed, so it was being removed out of the contract here.
That's correct.
So, so they won't be able to come back and say, I never got paid.
That's right. Clearly, you have designed it, the change order.
Okay, make a motion to approve? I say no.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 11, discussion and action regarding the purchase of a new wastewater pump.
Last time, the bid that we had was over 6,000, excuse me, not bid, the price estimate we had last, last time was over $6,000. Keith has went and contacted two different companies, Smith and Lovelace and ISI Southwest. Both of these estimates come in the exact same amount, $4,674.18. You do not need to go out for bids unless it's over $5,000. Mary was going to see where we could pull this out of the budget, and then it's just a matter of us choosing, if we want to go ahead and replace this, you remember it's with the Veterans Center, the pump station, we only have one running now.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, all of the prices were the same, one included freight and one didn't, which meant that the ISI Southwest was actually the better deal, because Smith and Lovelace had the same price, but they had an add-on for freight. Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do. And they were the ones that I was gonna suggest, because they're in Oklahoma, they don't use Kansas, so.
Okay.
Courtney, were you able to find the money at the time for this?
Actually, I was able to find the money in the operating supply budget for the water treatment plant, and we amended that budget, we had to bump the chemical costs way up, which is where that lands, and, you know, it's been such a shock in the dark in chemicals with the plant improvements, and knowing where it's actually gonna fall out, but I think when we did the amendment, we came in really high with that, so the amended amount that had been approved was $78,000. And I know what will be incurred through the month of April, because Philip does a good job of letting me know when he orders chemicals, and we're in at $49,000, so I feel like we can safely take $5,000 out of that water treatment plant operating supply budget and move it to the account of your choice, which would either be sewer repairs, or what I think would make more sense, which would be capital outlay, because it will extend the life of the lift station. Thank you.
Any questions for Keith on the mower, or on the pump?
Well, we need to discuss where it's gonna come from, it's gonna come out of the chemicals, but doesn't it need to go into, what's the category, I don't have, since we don't have a financial report for this month?
She just stated that it, she felt like it was better to put it into capital outlay.
Instead of, why not in sewer, 'cause that's where it's going to, it's where sewer.
Right, well, what I just said was, because it will extend the life of the lift station, here's the problem, it, it's a bigger problem besides the single transaction, we don't have a fixed asset list, and, and when I met with the auditors and talked to them about that, that's, that's not okay. So I would like to, you know, you guys don't have a capitalization policy to say if it's over X amount, we will automatically capitalize. This is enough of a dollar amount that got my attention, in my mind, it does extend the life of the pump of the lift station, my recommendation would be that it's capital outlay. However, we can put it in sewer repairs if that's the accounting transaction you wanna make.
Well, that's, that's what it is, is a sewer repair.
A repair and a capitalization are two different things, it's like when you roof a house.
Uh huh, but we're not, we're not going to IRS and deducting it under capitalization either.
I, I'm not going to argue accounting.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm trying to understand why you're saying one's better than the other.
Well, because it is extending the life of it, the asset has life, so it is a capital outlay, as opposed to a repair.
Right. But we're not expensing it, we don't do that.
No, it, it's expensing it on both sides, we're not talking about income taxes at all, okay? We're not talking about that, it'll be handled exactly the same on the revenue expenses, because we are on a cash basis. The reason that I would like to segregate it in a capital outlay account is because we don't have a fixed asset list for this company, and I would like to start carving out those transactions in a way that myself or any other accountant or auditor could go back and look and see, these are, these are the equipment.
Okay, I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Each department has its budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, don't we need to show money being deposited into that department's budget to show how we pay for that?
Well, and, and so what you're saying in that regard would be that sewer revenues would be assigned to sewer expenditures, and the way public works is set up is that all the revenues are assigned to all the expenditures. Now, for the purpose of cost accounting, we can go and we can look and say, this is what it costs to treat 1,000 gallons of sewer.
I'm just simply saying, can you put the department money in the department account?
That's what we're talking about doing, it's a sewer expense, yes, yes, absolutely.
You can show the transaction to go into that department, okay, all of the other stuff.
And you worked with this, you worked with ISI before, right?
That's a company, Dale was actually familiar with, I'm like, we got that into a company name from Dale.
They have good stuff, Dale?
Well, this is a Smith and Lovelace lift station, okay, and, and they actually went to Smith and Lovelace and got this price, that's the reason I'm, I'm surprised that they're giving it.
It's coming out of the water.
They really should be the same price.
For the chemicals. For chemicals, that's something.
So.
ISI is just wire of Smith and Loveless, if we don't allow to put a left station in, and it's a Smith and Loveless left station, we would be falling for ISI.
If we're gonna buy a pump, it has to be.
Wait, Mary, don't misread, I think you misread this, it says applicable for sales tax, full freight and installation costs must be added to all quoted prices, I don't think it does include.
Are you looking at the old one, though, did you?
Oh, no, up in the top it does say, it contradicts itself.
Okay.
Quote and say it's freight.
Here's the deal.
FOB, oh, okay, so we're going to pay for freight when it counts, right?
No, uh, Keith actually got in touch with them and asked for some clarification, and this was the document that they reissued, so if it's unclear, I apologize in advance for that. Um, actually, I was the one who requested that document, so if it, it contradicts itself, I'm sorry, I'll have to seek clarification from them. But basically, what they explained to us was the forty-six seventy-four from ISI Southwest, that's the one that it's just, everything is built into that price, right? Keith, that's the one you had me call them.
That's the way I'm.
Right, cause you had me call them and reissue that document where it says quote includes freight.
That other one.
That was their intention, I can't account for how they wrote it up, but that was their intention.
And what is FOB? Fred, isn't that like Fred on delivery?
Basically, it's saying that we're responsible for it once it leaves their place, but the point being that, or no, once it arrives at our destination, they're responsible for it up until then.
So we're gonna end up paying freight.
Well, then, this is stated wrong, because both Keith and I have talked to these folks, and maybe they don't have their terminology correct, but what their intention was, regardless of their wording, was they actually reissued this, are you looking at the same one I am? Because I had to give you guys a replacement when I replaced.
FOB means they get delivery when they get to your door.
That's what I'm thinking, that's what that, what we have to.
Okay, just to move things along, we don't need to do anything, we can, I'll make a motion that we accept ISI Southwest quote of forty-six seventy-four contingent upon freight being included in the bid, and that we take the money out of the, what number, what is it, the, uh, chemical?
Water treatment plant operating supplies.
Water treatment plant operating supply, and move it into sewer operations to pay for the pump.
Okay, so you want a sewer.
That's a motion. I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Item number twelve, discussion and action regarding fees for public records copies.
We tabled that before.
We take no action on that. Item number thirteen, approve or reject allowing Financial Officer Mary Tennants to make online payments for the city's Staples account previously approved purchase orders?
So moved.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
The fifth?
Yes.
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes. Item number fourteen, discussion and action regarding updating the signature cards for the Tallahena Public Works Authority bank accounts of the Tallahena branch of the Spiro State Bank.
I'll make a motion as we did before, the elected officials, Renee, me, Donna, Rhonda, Gina, and Gina. And remove Jackie.
Remove Jackie. We have a motion? And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes. Item number fifteen, we will take, did we?
Tabled, yeah.
Item number sixteen, approve or reject entering into executive session consistent with Title twenty-five Oklahoma State Statute three oh seven B one discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salary, public officer, or employee, Philip Elkins.
I make a motion to approve?
I second that motion, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yeah, yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, excuse me. Item number eighteen, action, no, item number seventeen, approve or reject exiting from executive session?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes. Item number eighteen, action if any from executive session?
Um, we discussed with our employees, um, about some derogatory comments that were made in public and addressed the situation.
Okay, but other than that, we're taking them?
No action.
No action. We are going to skip nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, because we covered this in the town. So we're on item number twenty-two, new business, anybody have new business for public works?
It's not really new business, old business, uh, looking to the manager, reminded me, did we ever decide what we're gonna do at the water plant on the lights?
Yes, um, Phillip had a representative of AUP come out, they have found two sites that they could put a pole in. I have drafted, I haven't sent off yet, but I drafted a letter, putting that onto our street light account. That way, we are not going to be charged for the installation of those poles, it will simply be, was the ten, ten fifty a month, charged with a hundred, four hundred watt light.
We'll have to, have to bring that back up on a, a gender item and vote on it, will we not?
Did not, we not approve?
I don't think we approved it.
I thought we approved.
That's why, that's what I was looking at.
I'll research that, Donnie, if it hasn't.
Double check that.
Back on there, but I was pretty sure my motion was that we could do up to three lights, at the, at the ten fifty.
Maybe I was looking at the one before that we tabled, but I don't know, maybe second.
We tabled at one meeting and the next one.
And so, double check that and see, and since we're talking about streetlights, we've got a streetlight out downtown, um, right there by, between Pam's and my building.
Uh, we did approve, uh, to install three pole lights with the monthly fee not to exceed ten dollars and seventy-eight cents a pole.
Okay, so I was looking at the previous one then.
Item number twenty-three.
Make a motion to adjourn? I'll second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.